Good morning. The August 11th, 2020 Special State Board of Education meeting is being recorded in accordance with Governor Lamont's executive order. A registration go-to webinar link was provided to allow for public access. Please mute your lines when you are not speaking. Board member attendance and all votes will be done by roll call. Public participation was provided via email or webinar. Emails collected for this meeting will be shared with the board members and will be posted on the board's website. Webinar participants were able to register to speak at the meeting. Chairman Taylor, you may call the meeting to order.
I do call to order the special meeting of the State Board of Education for August 11, 2020. First item on the agenda, it's always just the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Al. I have next that you're to call the rolls.
Okay, yes, so starting Chairman Taylor.
Here.
Vice Chair Lopez.
Here.
Erin Benham.
Here.
Bonnie Burr.
Here.
Mr. Clemmons, Eric Clemmons will be absent from the meeting today. Karen DeBois-Walton.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Elwood Exley.
Here.
Donald Harris.
Here.
Martha Prue.
Here.
Will D'Arasco.
Here.
Thank you. Good morning. Malia Stevie.
Here.
Thank you. That concludes the attendance roll call, and we have more than a quorum in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you. Public participation, we received, I believe, two.
Correct.
Which everybody should have had access to. And then that takes us to the items requiring action.
Chairman Taylor, we're still on public participation. We have two speakers for today's public participation.
Five speakers. Okay.
Okay. So I believe, I believe the first person will be Gwen Samuel from Connecticut Parents Union.
You're welcome, Gwen.
Gwen, could you please unmute yourself?
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay.
Yes.
Sorry. All right, good morning. I pray all of you are safe and well, with all this is happening out in the world. With that being said, I'm calling as the founder and president of the Connecticut Parents Union, as a black mom and a grandma, and I am opposed, very opposed to this 180-day, 900 instructional hour waiver. And why this sounds confusing is I'm listening to the governor over and over again, talking to various educational leaders, trying to figure out ways so that we can safely go back to school, because we know that these kids, especially children that face an achievement gap, are even in a bigger gap. I'm actually calling it a gulf. So we know, we now have, because of the pandemic, opportunity gulf and academic achievement gulf. So to reduce, to make any conversations that focus on reducing instructional hours appears to be unconstitutional, and it's discriminatory, because this law would disproportionately target black children, brown children, poor children, special needs children. And I can't even think about, which I'm thinking about, is our homeless population. We have children that are protected by the McKinney-Vento Act. So those children need to get stability. So the rules, whatever plans that you make, should number one, always include the voice of parents and students. But then number two, you can't put something in place that harms children. While you can't control for the COVID and what is happening, we can put safety measures in place, but your rules should not be able to trump the Constitution, the constitutional rights of these children. And you also are impacting their future earnings, because you're not giving them access to the tools they need to be self-governing. And then number, the question I have on the table, which I will send later on, is how does that impact October 1st? When you take the count of students in a school, and that becomes the funding the schools get, are you going to cut funding? If you're going to reduce service hours, are you going to create a pool of educational funding or scholarships, so these parents can seek the educational services elsewhere that you may not be providing through this waiver? And we can't even begin to talk about checks and balances. How are you going to hold educators accountable for the hours? How are you going to track those hours? How are you going to measure achievement? And all of this has a fiscal note to it. So as I wrap up, again, I'm in my eight seconds, I'm asking that before you vote on this, get a legislator to do a racial impact assessment. And if this law or this waiver disproportionately targets any, I don't care what child.
These completely sowls. Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Al.
The next speaker will be Michelle Rodolphy O'Neill from CEA.
Michelle, you should now be unmuted.
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Good morning, Co-Chairs Taylor and Lopez, Commissioner Cardona, and esteemed members of the board. My name, as you heard, is Michelle Rodolphy O'Neill. I'm a former teacher, and I currently serve as the Educational Issue Specialist for the Connecticut Education Association. I'm here talking today to address the board's consideration of expanding certification flexibility during the COVID-19 pandemic. We urge State Board of Education members to balance flexibility with maintaining the professional status of educators and ensuring the high-quality teaching and student support services that accompany appropriate teacher certification. Given the emergency pandemic situation the state of Connecticut is in, coupled with a recognized need to maintain high academic quality standards for students, CEA urges the State Board of Education to consider pursuing targeted flexibility in creating the proposed temporary emergency generalist pre-K through 8 and 7 through 12, and emergency teacher of English learners, PK through 12, authorizations with critical parameters as follows. First, the authorization will only last for the current academic year only. Second, those teachers who must stay home to care for children, or who are at risk and seeking accommodation to protect their health, shall be allowed to remote teach into the classroom in their district. Those granted emergency authorizations shall not supplant teachers who are available for remote in teaching. Authorizations shall be offered first to teachers within the district prior to supplanting any available teachers in said district. Fourth, limits shall be placed on how far beyond the underlying certification area a teacher shall be permitted to teach, so for example, going up or down two or three grade levels. And fifth, and finally, the State Board shall consider placing a limit on the percentage of full-time equivalence teachers in the district who can be granted such authorizations. We thank you from CEA, all of you on the State Board, for your consideration, and I'm glad to see that you're all well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Chairman Taylor, that concludes public participation.
Thank you. That then takes us to item 3A on the agenda. Miguel, say.
Sure, thank you. Yes, thank you. I just wanted to, again, thank you all for your availability today on such short notice in order to conduct the business of public education in Connecticut. As was mentioned in the last meeting, we're doing our best to move along, thinking about policies and practices that need some adjustment, given the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to move away from executive orders to do many of these things. Our team has worked really hard to try to identify areas that need attention, and they're presenting it to you today, and we're hoping for a favorable recommendation on the three items that are going to be brought in front of you. We want to, again, on behalf of everyone at the State Department, want to thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration. We feel that favorable recommendations would allow schools not only to allow for that in-person opportunity that they're striving for, but also do our best to staff our schools so that we can do the business of educating children when they come in. So with that, I want to turn it over now to the first item, which is 180-day waiver for 2021 school year due to COVID-19 pandemic and provisional hybrid and/or remote learning models. And Attorney Justin Myrtle, legal director, will be taking it over from you. Attorney Myrtle?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, Chairs Taylor and Lopez and Board members. As you know, I'm Justin Myrtle, the State Department of Education Legal Director. Weird though, because the COVID-19 pandemic has caused historic disruption in Connecticut's education system and nationally. And the impact of that disruption, as we know, has been managed by an intensely engaged set of educators, families, and superintendents, administrators, and with a little flexibility provided by executive order when necessary for public health emergency and civil preparedness reasons. One of the issues addressed last school year by executive order was around this basic requirement in Connecticut about the number of actual school sessions and hours of school instruction during each year, which has historically been interpreted to require in-person school access, which presents a question about hybrid and remote learning opportunities, and is why we are here today. Connecticut law grants you the authority to allow local boards of education to modify these requirements due to unavoidable emergency. And as you may recall in the past, and for you newer board members, this is something that is very rarely granted, and we strongly emphasize the importance of educational access in person, and of course, our agency agrees. Everyone agrees that nothing replaces in-school learning, that full-in-school learning is best aligned to provide educational access. We're aware that remote learning issues introduce new issues of equity, as well as access to other important supports, such as social-emotional support and other basic needs for our students. And we've been preparing, along with our educational community, to maximize in-person access for those reasons, so long as it's consistent with the public health and safety requirements. And this includes instructions to schools that they should prioritize access for special education students, L students, and high-needs students. Nonetheless, today, on behalf of the Commissioner, I'm here to propose and recommend a resolution ensuring that the law allows for some local flexibility, while also providing boundaries for decision-making. We've obviously had conversations with many, many stakeholders, including teachers, parents, superintendents, legislators, and partners in the school community. And school districts still anticipate the need to transition back to in-person classes, sometimes without the full population in a hybrid model, sometimes staggering or transitioning or phasing back into school. The adoption of a hybrid model or phasing into school, or potentially providing remote access to education, raises a statutory question, which is why, as legal counsel, I'm here today. It also raises public health and educational policy questions, which, as you know, the Commissioner, Governor, and all of our state leadership continue to try to address through our guidance, support, funding, technical assistance, and regular outreach. So I wanted to make sure I articulated some of the boundaries outlined in this resolution. The resolution requires that a decision to move away from the traditional educational model be supported by a good phase decision that is supported by public health indicators. And if you wouldn't mind sharing addendum four of the interim guidance for decision-making in Connecticut schools during COVID-19, page two, I would appreciate it. This was sent to you over the past couple weeks, and you may have seen it, but I thought it was important to just mention in the context of this resolution. This was published by SDE and DPH to provide some parameters and information around quantifiable considerations for local district leaders. So you'll see here that it provides some leading indicators and secondary indicators, and outlines, again, quantifiable determinations that the school districts can consider. Of course, they also need to consider some of the specific, unique, local building, community issues that arise. The reason I bring this up is because this resolution is linked to these indicators. Should indicators remain where they are, which right now, the good news is we're in the yellow zone or the low zone in most of our counties, or in all of our counties, should the indicator shift to red, which is high-risk, this resolution will allow school districts to move to fully remote without additional action, which will safeguard the necessity to make quick decision-making at the local level. However, it provides that if a school leader determined not to allow for any in-school options during a time when we're in the yellow or the orange, the lower moderate risk, such determination would have to have an exception review by a panel, which would be representatives of the State Department of Education, the State Board of Education, our School Construction Office, which is in the Office of Policy Management, and also the Department of Public Health. You can go ahead and take that down as you, thank you. So just before discussing questions, again, I want to emphasize that we make this proposal to allow for local decision-making that appears necessary to consider the local public health indicators and the totality of the circumstances in some of these schools and communities, and particularly to allow parents who want to keep their kids at home to keep their kids at home, and for potentially hybrid phased approach options as we enter the school year. It requires that decision be based on a decision that is in good phase, proper, and advisable, which again, we've defined as linked to these public health indicators, as well as the totality of the circumstances. And while it allows some flexibility, I do want to remind you that all other statutory requirements, as well as all state agency guidance and regulations, will still be in effect. So the importance of engagement, and equity, and accountability, and assessments, all will continue to be supported and required by us as the leading SDE educational agency. And finally, in the final sentence, you'll note that there's the opportunity for the Commissioner to not just issue, you know, further this resolution, but also to potentially issue binding guidance as necessary, to allow for us to ensure that the resolution is adapted in a way that's consistent with your intent. So with that, I will turn it over to you for discussion or questions. And again, it is our recommendation that, given this emergency, unavoidable emergency, we provide additional flexibility to our local districts with these boundaries as we've established.
Questions or comments from anybody? Malia. Malia?
Yep. Good morning, everybody. Yeah, I think I'm, I'd love to, I really want to sit in this discussion for a little bit, because there are a lot of pieces here, right? With a lot of implications. And I think I was probably channeling Ms. Samuel's a bit this morning, as she was talking. And I just want, I really think that each of these pieces that we're laying out deserves a good amount of discussion, so we have a really clear sense about what it is that we're, that we may be agreeing or not agreeing to. I have to say, I have been, so I'm going to go on a little bit of a diatribe, so you know, that's what I do. I've been particularly disheartened, angered about sort of local news and how it really talks about the fear and anger that teachers across the country have, and everybody's families have about going back to school. And we're in such a different place here in Connecticut. But there's very little attention to the fact that we are at a very different place here in Connecticut and in the Northeast. We're really doing quite well. And, you know, we are also, we also have to recognize that in good times, in good times, we have, as Ms. Samuel, as Ms. Samuel's noted, an achievement gulf and an education crisis in the state for our low-income children and our students of color, that is shameful. The idea that we in this state with such a low infection rate may succumb to sort of the fears, instead of doing everything that we need to do to ensure that we have the environment provided that is safe for everyone that enters a school building when we have the ability to do so, is really saddening and just concerning to me. One thing that I've learned in working across states is that we nutmeggers are really good at arguing and complaining and fighting, and I really wish that we would collectively in our communities do a better job at turning that fighting into solutions around how we make sure that we are not continuing to leave in good times students who are already behind. I'm not concerned at the moment of elementary schools, will they get into college? I'm concerned, will they come back to school? We need to have them. We need to ensure that they have the educational and social-emotional needs met. Now, we've already lost a quarter of last year because of this. And I am deeply concerned about how it is that we are not going to continue to lose that over, for our most vulnerable students, over this next year. The 180 days in the, in the resolution, there isn't, it's sort of an open-ended, right? Like, there is nothing that says anything about, but we have to at least ensure X. And I think we still need to ensure 900 hours of instruction. And these are students who, my concern is, how do we even assess what their learning loss is, when they were already behind in the first place? Where do we go from here? Right? I completely agree with the comments that Ms. Samuel made about accountability and how will we hold folks accountable to the instruction of students that are already behind, and who already have a whole host of social-emotional needs that need to be taken care of, that are met within schools. I have bunches of questions that come out of this, but I'm going to quiet myself for just a moment, and let other people sort of either react or speak.
Alan.
Karen. Estella, and then Karen.
Thank you. I'm in agreement with Malia. I'm very torn also between the flexibility that perhaps needs to be present, given the times, but also what Malia expressed as, what is the minimum? You know, given that flexibility, how do we ensure that students are not lost? How do we ensure that there's a minimum amount of instructional learning that takes place? And Jessa and I talked yesterday, and that was my question to her, you know, again, I understand moving from one to another, if things happen, and there's a, you know, public health challenge, and so on and so forth, but I want to make sure that we don't lose students like we've had lost in the spring semester. How do we, again, responsible, make sure that students do have the opportunity to make and receive the instruction that they deserve, using, you know, the, what is it? I'm like, like Malia, I'm very torn, and I do agree that this is complicated and difficult, because it's not the 180. I do believe that, I'm also, like her, I'm sort of bambling, but whatever. 180 is sort of an arbitrary number that used to be used, and all that is, it is learning that we want to make place that happens. So I don't see that explicitly expressed in the resolution, you know? How do we guarantee that that's not going to be lost in allowing some flexibility? So those
Thank you, Al. Karen?
Morning.
Morning.
Can you see me? What's going on with my camera? Oh, I don't know what's going on with my camera, but good morning. So I have a couple of questions to ask, rooted in my understanding that districts across the state have submitted their plans, and that their plans included, or their plans were dependent upon a number of things being in place. So one, I'm concerned about whether we think by school opening, that all of the elements that a district said they needed in order to do a plan are in place, things they needed to order or purchase, have access to technology, PPE. Is that in place in a way that a district is prepared to open according to the plan that they had proposed? And given that, and districts pushing up against the deadline of school opening, I'm wondering, I'm listening to you talk about the panel review, I'm wondering how many districts are currently subject to the panel review? How many are asking to do something that requires them to come in front of the panel at this point, meaning that they want less in-person time and more remote time? And then finally, the schools that have submitted the plans that include the hybrid model, how many hours of instructional time are in those plans? So we have, we have a body of knowledge at this point, based upon the spring. How many hours of instructional time did people, did students get in the spring? We have a body of knowledge from the plans that have been submitted by districts that said they wanted to do hybrid. How many instructional hours has the department seen in those plans that they've reviewed and deem acceptable? So that we, I have some frame of knowledge about what's the difference between what you're thinking and the 900-hour current requirement? Are those questions cleared?
Commissioner?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your thoughts, members of the board. And, you know, I think to go back a little bit and identify what we are hoping to accomplish here, is we're hoping to go from what the executive order did to a system that allows us to count days this upcoming year, even though those days do not look like what they were in previous years. Specifically, any families who choose to keep their children home and be educated through a fully remote currently wouldn't have, they wouldn't receive credit. So if a third grader is home learning through a program that the district is providing, currently, they wouldn't receive credit for going to school. The requirement of having a distance learning option in Connecticut by the governor forced us to look at how we're counting those days differently. And then secondly, how Justin described it, in the event that the health metrics require that it's best to provide learning in remote fashion, we want to make sure that we're not discounting those days, much like in the spring, we had to count those days. So that's the gist of it, is that it allows the flexibility, given the reality that there might be ebbs and flows when it comes to the infection rates, but just as important, it allows for those students whose families chose to have them be educated from home to receive that and have that count. The questions about the minimum standard, and the concerns that, how are we ensuring that students are being educated and they're being challenged? You know, we, we recognized prior to COVID, the significant opportunity gaps that exist in Connecticut. You know, we're poised, we were, and we still are. And as a matter of fact, we need to double down now on those efforts to make sure that our students with special needs, our ELs, and our students who are, we've been, we haven't had success engaging, receive more, not less. And that's a challenge. We've talked internally about how do we do this, knowing that it's going to look different for many kids. It's a huge challenge, but one that we recognize is an important one. I don't know that there's any intent here to say that there's an expectation of less days. It's just that delivery of service is going to look different. And it could be, it would be up to the district, if a district makes a change, to employ a fully remote model and give them a chance to get credit for those days. The accountability measures that were brought up, not only are we thinking about academic indicators of where are the students, we've been talking about how to best assess that, how to use the existing menu of resources that have been developed already within the agency, to get a baseline of where our students are, and to continue to help support and monitor how they're doing, and then identify places where they're not growing at all, or where the service delivery is not resulting in any growth. We have particular attention, we pay particular attention to those areas We have particular attention, we pay particular attention to those areas where our students don't have technology at their disposal. We recognize the challenge there. I also think we have been cognizant of the fact that if we do what we've done with social emotional learning, it's insufficient. We need to do more. We need to assess where our children are from the social emotional perspective and be better prepared to not only assess where they are, but provide programming to support them in that area. So those are two areas that we are recognizing need a lot more attention, and given how schools are gonna be reopening in different ways, we have to be nimble and not lose sight of the fact that student achievement still matters, and it matters more than anything else, and we have to be focused on that. So Karen, to your point, we are monitoring how the plans are being developed. We have a review process that is looking at the plans, they've gotten through 200 of them, and they're looking at those health and safety requirements, as you alluded to, that are non-negotiable, and we're reaching back out to those districts that we have questions about it or we don't see it in their plans to ensure that they're doing that. We're gonna continue to do that with the academic implementation and the assessment to see where students are as we start to school. If Ajit or Charlene or Desi want to add to that, I'd be happy to have them jump in.
Good morning. Karen, to answer your initial question about the ordering, so CIRC and Ingrid Kennedy set up a system by which more than half of our districts at last count had been purchasing their PPE throughout the summer. In addition to that, Kathy Dempsey and I have a meeting this morning or this afternoon with OPM to discuss the funding, the additional funding that the governor announced last week so that we can begin to have a system to disperse that, those funds out to districts as soon as possible. So just want to add those two additional points to your initial question.
There are questions? Karen?
Well, I guess my, I'm not clear in the hybrid, for districts that are choosing hybrid, or should the whole state need to go to remote? I'm not clear how the minimal instructional hours would be determined are appropriate at the board level, so the district would have to submit a plan, they already have a plan, they'd have to update their plan or whatever. I'm not sure how you would determine under this what is acceptable instructional time in hours and days, however that would be calculated.
Yeah, just to respond, I want to acknowledge that the points that you are bringing up, we have had a lot of conversation about, you know, same issues, so, you know, we certainly understand the concerns about having some guardrails, and I guess that's why I tried to emphasize, you know, some of the safeguard that are in the language there, you know, forcing districts to provide another option as the commissioner indicated. It wouldn't be that it was not intended for them to provide remote learning or hybrid opportunities. I know, I don't know, I'm not the best person, it's not my area of expertise to talk about this, but I do know that our chief academic, our chief academic staff member Irene Parisi is providing, starting to provide some additional structures and instructional outlines to allow for a little bit more structure around what our expectations would be in this area, and that's part of why we included the language to allow for binding guidelines to be issued by the State Department of Education. They have already issued the reimagining Connecticut classroom for continuous learning, which describes some of the recommendations for remote modeling and includes a recommendation that there be a 50-50 synchronous and asynchronous approach to time when students are not in the classroom. They've also been distributing Columbia University's Center for Public Research and Leadership has provided a, what they're calling the conrobe distance learning model, which includes some specific recommendations around what instructional time should look like, sample instructional schedules for staff. So we are talking about this precise concern and trying to continue to engage at the agency in ensuring that we're setting some standards that may not be explicitly outlined in this resolution, but where the expectations would be coming from the State Department of Education, you know, as a result of this resolution.
So it's more timing, the more information, more guidance. Right now, what we're trying to do is, when we receive plans, we're identifying the balance between in-person and at-home, and what does that at-home look like? Districts have been forced to develop a new system, not only for students who are learning from home on the days that they're not in the building, and the reason why they're not in the building is the district's attempt to reduce density, but they're also thinking about how are they educating students who made the decision or whose families made the decision to stay home five days a week? That's a pretty large task that they are working hard on with their teachers, with their administrators, with their principals. We have provided some guidance around, you know, metrics and what you should be thinking about. We are looking at best practices. Districts are doing it differently. Some have camera systems set up, some have staff that are available to assist with the remote learning, others don't have that staff. So what we need to do is assess how they're providing the education, raise the bar, make sure that there's a level of consistency, and then most importantly, make sure we're providing the right support in those areas where the gaps exist from a structural perspective. So at this point, the guidance that we're asking for, or what we're asking for today is the flexibility for them to continue that, so those students who are home get the credit, but we're gonna continue to work under Chief Academic Officer Irene Parisi and Desi Nesmith to make sure that the standards are high so that the students are not missing out on quality experiences when they're home, either on the days that they're not in the building if they're part of a hybrid model, or for those students who are home in a five-day program.
Ellen? Bob?
I guess a couple of things. I guess one is, I take it that, you know, the proposal really, that's before the board doesn't really, it doesn't really specifically talk about the parents that opt out. You know, is it okay, is it still okay to opt out? Which I think it is, from everything I understand, but that's something you just may want to clarify. The other thing that is somewhat the timing, I guess, so say, my understanding is that there's a lot of districts that are gonna do either hybrid or hybrid for some, like a lot of high schools are gonna do hybrid, a lot of primary and second, primary and middle schools maybe doing in-person, you know, how do you, how does that work through this system? Is it okay to have, you know, a model where not, there's some groups of kids that are hybrid and other grades are in-person? And how do you, and does this review that takes place happen before they can implement it, or is it, is it after they implemented it? So is it a barrier to them starting school because they've got to go through the review process? I think part of what concerns me, and I understand the intent of this, but I, part of what concerns me is that there was this feeling amongst the education community that, you know, everybody, the governor wanted everybody to go back to school. Then it was like, well, then you decide. And I was in, I was interesting enough in a meeting where some people from Boards of Education were saying, well, we'd like it better when the state decided, now the burden's on us. And, and you get what you asked for, right? So they want to have the flexibility, they had the flexibility, and it's still a concern. And I wonder if this is gonna be viewed as, you know, taking, you know, kind of reversing it again and saying, well, it's okay to do what you want to do, but if you do that, then we've got to approve it. You know, it's, you know, so it's like, how do you, how does this fit in with people without feel like they're being whipsawed?
So thank you for that. I'll reiterate the intent of the flexibility was based on, after a month of developing plans, we heard from all different stakeholders, the fact that school scenarios are different throughout, right? We have a 3,000-student school and we have a 150-student high school. You have to look at them differently, and the flexibility requirement was based on the fact that you can't, it's not gonna be the same, right? And we heard from superintendents that it was a matter of health and safety to have some flexibility, so it was a no-brainer. With that comes, right, the communication, now what does that look like? And to what extent is there flexibility, which is what you're asking? To answer really quickly your other answer, yes, many districts are saying we're gonna go with some form of hybrid for some grade levels like our high school, and K8, we are going full, we feel that we can meet the mitigation strategies and we can successfully bring students in without going hybrid. So that's, that's a common theme. In many cases, the high schools, there are, they're able to come in full in-person, they feel like they can spread students out enough and follow those mitigation strategies. So that flexibility allows districts to do that as well. As you recall through the press conference and maybe communications after, the governor felt strongly that because of the metrics in Connecticut, an attempt should be made to bring students in school throughout, and we believe that there is no substitute for in-person learning. And those relationships that are critically, are critical are forged in the beginning of the school year when routines are established, relationships are set. If in the future there's a need to go fully remote, as we did in the spring, having those established relationships are critical. Our data indicates in Connecticut that it does lend itself to in-person experiences. So the governor felt very strongly, as do we, that every effort should be made to bring students into school, especially students with special needs, who a laptop and a good internet connection are not gonna cut it. You know, we have children with autism who have not been with a teacher since March 12, and if we're not saying that we need to do everything in our power to provide an environment for those children to learn in the classroom, then we're not doing our jobs. So the clause of review was a, was a request by the governor to ensure that districts that are choosing to go fully remote either have good reasoning to do that or explain why they're doing that so that we are making sure that, number one, the supports are there, that they have a clear communication of what the expectations are, how they should be using the funding that they have received, to make sure that they're making the best decisions for their students. Ultimately, as the governor has mentioned several times, the decision of how to open is gonna be the local districts. But we have a due diligence to make sure that in cases where the decisions do not align with what the thinking is nationally in terms of reopening schools, and I must reiterate what was said by several other members, Connecticut is in one of the best positions in the country, and we are, I think, the number is 10, the threshold is 10, to move over to the potential for hybrid, we were at two last week. So we're doing well within that measure. We need to make sure that we're providing an opportunity for those districts to communicate why it's the best idea for their children to stay home when throughout the country, throughout the state, other students are getting opportunities to learn in person. You know, when we talk about preventing achievement disparities from growing, you know, that's our job, and I don't think that it's usurping the district's responsibility or their ultimate decision-making, but it's trying to get an understanding as our role to protect public education, why they're doing that, and is that the best reason to do that? And, you know, are there ways that we can guide you to go to another district that has similar demographics and are handling it differently? How can we provide that guidance and support? It's initiating that conversation.
Well, just to make sure we clearly address Karen's question, as of right now, we don't have any official, as far as I'm aware, we don't have any official requests for review for full remote learning, and we're anticipating that it should be a small number as of right now.
Can I just follow up? I think the, you know, I get the full remote, but if they're doing the hybrid method, do they still need to go through this whole process?
No.
Okay, so hybrid is basic, is similar to being in school full-time. The ones that I don't know anybody is doing remote, there may be some, but I know there's a lot that are trying to do a combination of hybrid and in-school.
And I do want to just add to what Attorney Myrtle said earlier, we are drafting instructional time guidelines for both elementary and secondary, so that districts have some guardrails, if you will, when it comes to the amount of instruction time that we would expect students to see. So we are in the process of drafting and reviewing that now.
I guess just one last thing, when you, it's just a suggestion to be clear that if they are doing the hybrid, that, and maybe it does say that in here, just if they're doing the hybrid, it's not as, it's not as onerous to get approval to do that.
There's no approval process for hybrid. They have to declare if they're going full or remote, and then if, excuse me, full, hybrid or remote, and those that choose to go fully remote, we are going to be reviewing, you know, the exception of why they're doing it.
Okay, I didn't quite get that. I thought maybe you were also doing the same thing for hybrid. Thanks.
Thanks for the question.
Hi, this is Alza Wilder. May I speak?
Go ahead, Wilder.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Commissioner Cardona, I want to bring it back to this hybrid, high flex, at high, you know, we use the term in higher ed, high flex or hybrid, right? So are there going to be certain numbers in the classroom because that are going to be, I'm thinking in higher education, there's gonna be some students that are gonna be doing the online and being able to view what's going on in the classroom, along with being at home and along with being on-ground in schools, put it this way. Is that, is there a number of students that should be in the classroom? Because I know in higher education, there are certain numbers that are gonna be able to be in the classroom because they have to rearrange the distance in the classroom. Can you guide me through that so I have a better understanding?
So the expectation with hybrid is to reduce density, and it's typical that about 50% of the students will be in class at one point. We are encouraging districts to increase the support and presence of students with special needs or students that have had significant disengagement, or students that are underachieving grossly so that they get additional support. But typically, Alza, it's roughly half the students that are in the class.
Okay, okay, because I was thinking, you know, I just finished a online program and it was all virtual because the campus was closed, and one of the things that I want to share with you all and even the audience and the parents and students who are, who are listening to us, is that you brought up a good point, Commissioner Cardona, we have to continue with high expectations, okay? And this is not to say that all line tools are very good, okay? Many are not, some are good. But considering, you know, an example, we, you know, we can try three, for example, three online tools during the crisis, okay? And most likely, 2A worked, 2B was a dislike, and then the third one, it was indifferent, which is 2C, okay? And again, this doesn't exactly sound like a recipe for, you know, for a mass transfer, transformation into schools, but if 2A was, it was virtual and we use different models, we use YouTube, we use a lot of engagement tools that worked, I think it's, I think it's a way for us to consider that we should consider pursuing it rather than looking at it as change and having to look at it and saying, you know what, I'm afraid to move forward because of transformation. And like you said, Commissioner Cardona, you know, it's flexible, but just as long as we keep the rigorous, and like I've always said, you know, in coming from higher education, I want to see this achievement gap close, so we've got to get these kids back in the schools. And also, years ago, parents, let's talk about parents, as a parent, okay? We talked about parents, maybe some being engaged, others not. It was, you know, students of color, some of them, in my era, we were criticized because we were not engaged, right? In our schools, but we were, we cared about our children. So therefore, this is an opportunity for parents and teachers to also engage in the online and the tools that are being offered, either whether it's high flex, hybrid, or virtual, or on-ground, and so forth. And I just wanted to add that, and if you saw me in person, you'll see the passion, you know, you all know me, how, you'll see my passion in this, but it's very, very important that we adapt to change. But it's very, very important that we adapt to change, just like we adapted to uh Katrina, okay? And now therefore, now we, you know, this wasn't a school, the schools didn't create this problem. Nobody created this problem, okay? This is a systematic, worldwide problem. So therefore, we have to make the best with the tools we have in order to get our kids ahead. And I could embrace them when they're in higher education over at the colleges and universities. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Malia.
Um, when do we expect that, when do we expect that we'll have all of the plans from the schools to have a sense of what the numbers are between the models?
Sure, so uh, just last night, uh, I asked the G to follow up on the districts that didn't turn in their uh their declarations. I know a lot of them were waiting to have conversations with their boards or had special board meetings. Uh, but we're anticipating that at some point today, we should have um the declarations from districts. And we do anticipate um at least one district uh seeking to go fully remote. But we're hoping to have that today, uh, keeping in mind, um, you know, as difficult as it is to to acknowledge the fact that there's moving parts here, right? So in two weeks from now, if there are, if the infection rates um in in a specific area continue to rise or increase to the point where it might create some movement from full to to hybrid, that that's also within the rights of the districts based on the health data there. But we're anticipating that by today, we should have the declaration of where they are.
Martha, were you trying to raise a question? We can't hear you.
No, no, I was just pointing to Karen, she's got a question.
Oh, okay. Karen.
Commissioner, can you just be very clear for me? If if this were not to pass today, what what does that mean for districts uh who are trying to do hybrid or fully remote? Just trying to make sure I understand the.
Sure. If this doesn't pass today, it means that students that are learning from home would not receive credit for learning from home, whether it's the hybrid version or uh students whose families chose to keep them home.
Malia.
I'm wondering if if um there's the the need or value for additional sort of language around the um this waiver of the one hundred and eighty and and nine hundred hours. Because I think through the discussion, we've talked, I I think what I've heard from you, Commissioner, is um, is that in addressing the concerns around sort of that open-endedness, that we're also in this period of trying to figure out, how do we, how do we really define learning um of students to ensure that they are getting all the learning that that they need to in the year from more of a um, uh, you know, a mastery component versus a hours in a seat component? Um, given the concerns about sort of the open-endedness that seems to be in the language, is there something around intent that should be um included in that language to address that?
I would agree with what Malia suggested. I think we are all struggling with the concept of flexibility vis-à-vis um the notion of guardrails. And I'm more concerned, not so much with the hours, but with the notion of what Malia just said, learning outcomes. What I want to make sure is whatever format is used, the outcomes are met. The learning expectations for whatever grade, for whatever course, for whatever are are met. And I don't want to be specific because that can lead to, very specific, because that can lead to all kinds of complication. But I do think it's very open-ended and I'm I'm sort of torn with that. Again, the 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 challenge of the flexibility that we understand these times require vis-à-vis guaranteeing the learning that should happen. So if something could be added, that would be uh helpful to me.
Just to um address those points um within what what is here, and and we had to have this conversation, um, you know, sir, yesterday in in part, um, you know, I know that that this is obviously drafted by a lawyer and sort of reads that way, but I mean, I I do do want to make sure I bring your attention the fact that the fact that it requires this be a a good faith determination in the way that it does, you know, I I do think uh speaks to the intent of of the actor making that determination. And then I I'm not sure if I emphasized this in my introduction, but that it also suggests that the shortening of the school year or the the access to this resolution should be done to the minimum extent feasible. And so just to acknowledge that the intent of both of those pieces of language was to provide some of the um boundaries that you're that you're mentioning to ensure that folks weren't able to or weren't, you know, making these decisions lightly.
And Jessa, I would just add to that. Um, in both our our sensible assessment document that we released and the continuous learning plan um document, both of those documents emphasize the importance of focusing on grade level standards and content. Um, and that is emphasized throughout both of those documents because we want um students to get back into learning standards. Um, and and that would, that's what we want the focus to be. And so that's why when we release both of those documents, we make sure there was an emphasis um specifically on focusing on on grade level content and accelerating learning because we know our our students are going to need that. Malia.
I'm just wondering if there's just value in bringing that lang- some of that language into this document. I I just really have a fear of coming, you know, getting down the road a bit and having a district come back to us to say, but you don't understand my population, you don't understand what it is that we're dealing with and how we need to have these other exceptions. We all know, for those that have been on this board, that exactly has been an argument in other uh in other times that that we've had folks coming to us, and I would like to avoid that as much as possible.
Commissioner. Thank you. So I appreciate the the sentiments and the good discussion is really helpful uh for us. What I would propose uh to Chair and and Board members is uh two two options. Um, given where we are today and what we need to accomplish before the next three weeks, is we either um either table this and have maybe Jessa and Desi work on uh another paragraph that could be added and shared with you before the end of this meeting um for review that um provides more clarity around the expectations and addresses some of the concerns that were expressed here. Um, and then they bring that forward to us in, I I would say, less than half an hour for us to consider um uh having a new document that you feel more comfortable with that addresses some of those concerns, but also uh gives us the opportunity to act so that districts could um count those days that uh we told them that are going to be available for those families who choose to keep their children home. That's one. Uh, the other option would be that it would move forward today and that we would, in a subsequent meeting, present uh more specific language around um maintaining high high levels of uh, you know, student performance expectations, uh more clarity around not only assessments, but uh academic uh tools and um making sure that students are meeting the required standards. Uh, a little bit more in the weeds with regard to making sure students are exposed to the standards and are having access to the standards and communicating how they're assessing that information. That could be a greater depth uh at a subsequent meeting, or what we could do is um take a pause from this conversation, give them an opportunity to put some some safeguards in there that make you feel more comfortable with passing it here. And I'll turn to you, Chair.
I I would recommend that we give Jessa and and Desi, I don't think we need a new resolution. I don't think it it needs to be, you know, the good faith piece that Jessa understands as a lawyer. I don't get it as a non-lawyer. So I would like to to be more specific without having, you know, everything else that Desi has mentioned, but just to ensure that people, when they read it, they get the the expectation of uh what needs to be ensured that happens. So that would be my recommendation. We haven't.
Visiting lawyer to suggest.
Are you recommending Estella that we go with the option two?
No, I'm recommending that we go with option one, that we give them um time today to see. They can come up with a modify, you know, with um an additional wording. And if we are not satisfied, then we can go to, you know, we can decide what to do. But I I'd rather, you know, make it happen today if possible. That would be my option. I I don't know if we can, I see Malia nodding, so. But, Al, we have not, we have not made a motion for this resolution, so you would have to parliamentary decide what how to do it.
Let let me suggest that as as part of editing, one change that might be desirable is up at the top of the second page where it says is proper and advisable. I'd like to substitute the word necessary because I think that's part of what we're saying is that we want it, we want distant schools only when it is unavoidable. Uh, not as as an option that's for anything less dire than unavoidable. But I take it the from the general discussion that the idea of getting this resolution revised with more emphasis on the desirability, which I think everybody shares, of maintaining in-school education is is the the will of the board. Malia, am I, you're you're looking like I'm not quite getting it here.
I was just looking back at the actual document, and I think that there's a couple pieces. I think there's a a bit of what of what you're noting, but then also just reflecting back to the point that um that Jessa was pointing to where it speaks to the good faith effort. And in that particular uh paragraph of that piece, adding in some of the the language or reference points that Desi was mentioning in order to really speak to our expectations that um that it's it's really about ensuring that the student learning outcomes are met and that it's not necessarily nine hundred hours. But um just being super clear that there is um, there's an expectation that that we are holding districts to around those outcomes um with this flexibility uh of of the of a waiver for the nine hundred hours.
So if this is okay, I'd like to be able to jump off so I can go connect with Jessa if you are all okay with that.
Let's make sure, are we comfortable with that? Having Jessa and Desi focus on that for a little bit, come back to us when they're ready, and then we can continue. Now, I will share this, that we're moving on to the next topic, and uh my legal director is going to be somewhere in the back room working on some language, so um we'll see how that goes, but uh we need you, Jessa, we know where to find you.
Okay, excuse me, this is Al.
Jessa and and Desi, that's fine.
Okay, excuse me, so for um Mr. Harris, um, one, two things. One, we didn't have um a a movement and a second on this motion and then, so we'll need that. And then we'll need to do a motion to have it tabled.
Okay, thank you both. I have a motion.
I'll move.
Your second.
Second.
Okay, so let's present CV.
Mr. Chair.
What, Al? Yes, it's done. Wherever you are.
I would like to move that we table this uh motion uh to give their attorney and our deputy commissioner time to come back with a uh further, I guess, explanation.
I'll second. Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that is tabled. We have a motion for item three D, emergency educator certifications.
I'll move the item, Karen.
Second.
Your second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
Thank you, uh, Chair. Um, you know, another area of unprecedented need is um for us to ensure uh ultimately health and safety, but also the academic needs of our learners to ensure that we have a workforce that is prepared to greet our students when they come into school. And for variety of reasons that I won't go into details now, um, we have to make sure that uh we're providing some flexibility to allow our certified teachers um the ability to work in areas where they might not currently be certified, but may be a a great option for our learners. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Shwana Tucker and Christopher Todd from our talent office, who have been working tirelessly to try to make sense of the realities that our districts are facing and try to provide solutions to these problems uh in a way that's uh meaningful for our learners, but also for the profession. So with that, I'll turn it over to uh Dr. Tucker and Mr. Todd.
Thank you, Commissioner, and good morning, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Lopez, and Board members. I hope everyone is doing well. As you can imagine, the talent office has been extremely busy, fielding questions around a variety of topics concerning school reopening and potential flexibility. We have had numerous conversations with all of our stakeholders, including superintendent, union representatives, teachers, administrators, and others. As school districts resume in-person classes, they are preparing for potential changes and staffing needs. The employment of appropriate certified, authorized, and/or permitted educators is critical to the success of all of our students. And for this to occur, we want to afford districts needed flexibility to utilize certified teachers where needed. As a result, we are proposing the following certification flexibility. The first is the Emergency Generalist Number Two O One endorsement for pre-K through eight and the Emergency Generalist Number Two O Two endorsement, which covers seven through twelve. Emergency endorsements would authorize a certified educator currently holding an initial provisional or professional teaching certificate to teach all content and subject grade levels within pre-K through eight and/or seven through twelve at the request of the LEA slash district. The flexibility excludes special education and T-SO-L bilingual. The Number Two O Four emergency endorsement is for teachers of English learners pre-K through twelve. This emergency endorsement authorizes a certified world language teacher or a bilingual or T-SO-L teacher currently holding an initial provisional or professional certificate to serve either as a T-SO-L or bilingual content teacher in grades pre-K through twelve at the request of the LEA district. This emergency endorsement has been shared and discussed with Dr. Glaslabas, direct director of Equity and Language, who is in full support. These emergency authorizations are only good for one year, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, only to address the staffing concerns brought about by the pandemic. They will help to ensure that certified educators and districts have the flexibility required to retain qualified educators in the support of students through a variety of proposed instructional models. The teacher and the district must mutually agree to the move and issuance of the emergency authorization. And the emergency authorization will not affect TRB as they are approved assignment codes. Special authorization for paraeducators, we seek to utilize equivalency as prescribed in section ten dash one four five D six one four of the Educator Cert Regulation to accept twenty months of successful service as a paraeducator in lieu of the twelve credits, excuse me, and special education coursework required for temporary authorization such as durational shortage, area permit, and long-term subauthorization. The use of equivalency would allow paraeducators who have demonstrated twenty months of successful service as a paraeducator to be equivalent for the twelve content credits. This is in keeping with our current use of equivalency for candidates enrolled in non-credit-bearing programs such as ArcTel. We believe that this not only widens pool of potential candidates with appropriate professional experience to support students through temporary authorization, but it also creates pathways for paraeducators to potentially pursue a career as a certified educator.
Questions, thank you.
Is is this, I'll I'll start with questions. How is it that's emerg- How is it this emergency generalist, seven, 712 in particular? So if somebody is certified, say, as an as an English teacher, how does it determine that that person can teach high school math or seventh grade math for that matter? And why, why is this necessary at this point?
If it's. So Chair, go ahead, Dr. Tucker.
I was gonna say, based on information that we are receiving from districts and we have spoken with many of them HR directors, we're looking at a potential of about 70 to 75% teachers returning and 25 to 30% teachers potentially not returning. So we know that there will be some shortages. That's the first thing. Secondly, our goal is we would prefer to see a certified educator in front of our students as opposed to a sub, even though we have opportunities that we have given districts in hiring subs because they have asked for that. But we really leave that content specific movement to the district and the teacher because we feel that the superintendent and or administrator, they know the strengths of their teachers in their buildings, specifically seven through 12. So if there is an English teacher and let's say there's an abundance in a specific district and there's a shortage for a for social studies, if the principal and superintendent agree and have a teacher that they identify who they feel will be strong enough to shift from English to social studies to cover the gap in that area and the teacher agrees to that, then they can apply for the emergency search.
I also want to just be as frank as possible. This is also to try to keep the doors open. If we don't have enough teachers, we can't open the doors. That's the bottom line. It's not going to be safe enough. We can't, you know, just take a group of 20 students and put them in another class of 20 students. We can't do that. So this is really about allowing the emergency flexibility needed to put certified people in places where they typically wouldn't be, but where they might provide a great service for our students and they feel comfortable with that.
Erin?
I agree with the Commissioner on that front. I do think it is most important that we do have certified teachers in these classrooms versus perhaps a sub. And as we see districts coming in with, you know, there are teachers that are not choosing to return or to retire early. I think this is most important. And it is also something that teachers have been allowed to do in the past. They'd have to ask for that waiver to teach outside of their content area, but it is something that has been done to try to perhaps alleviate a a layoff when one teacher is needed in one area versus the other. I do like, I spoke with Chris at length yesterday. Thank you, Chris, again. I do appreciate that it is only for the year because I think that's most important, that we're not setting up. And I also appreciate that it's a mutually agreed upon. There are many teachers I know of already who have come up and said there are certain areas in our districts as they're as they're making these plans that especially in our special areas that their full schedules are are no longer full schedules. But they're completely capable of teaching outside of that, whether it being on a tutoring type of thing, being a hybrid teacher helping tutoring for our children that are staying at home. So I think it is really a necessary type of thing that we should really be looking at and considering. And I might also add the piece on the paras. I was I was concerned with that at first because of the waiver of special ed that always is a caution to me as a teacher. But I I understand it more fully now. We do have some paraeducator, we have many excellent paraeducators out there that perhaps are in a program to become a teacher and this certainly will give them the opportunity to use their very good educational skills with our students first as a certified, as a one-year, I shouldn't say certified, but as a one-year waiver in front of children versus bringing in a sub that perhaps doesn't know those children at all. So I also agree with that piece. And I think it's important that we give the flexibility to districts and that districts certainly use their in-house personnel to accomplish this.
Hi, hi again. This is Awilda. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, Awilda.
Yes, I I'm supporting it with the understanding, if I may ask, Dr. Tucker and Christopher Todd, that if teachers are teaching outside of their content area, that necessary resources and training is offered to them. I'm hoping that that's available to them. If if I can get some input on the on my on my concern.
Yes, so that that is definitely something that we've had a lot of conversations with our communication to districts. And Dr. Tucker, as she explained, our request is really around this. It has to be a mutual conversation. There has to be additional supports and resources provided by the district to the educator that would be agreeing to pursue this temporary authorization for the year. So we we do recognize that 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 is a concern and a challenge as well. And that would be one of the expectations of the district. So similarly, when we have requests for temporary authorizations in the Bureau, oftentimes districts have to provide additional supplemental information about what their intentions are to support that educator. What do they have in place? Is the educator going to be assigned to a particular veteran mentor or on a particular team? So when as we're looking at how we would process this, it would be reflective of previous temporary authorizations, which would require districts to provide a little bit of additional explanation of what the supports will be in place to support that educator.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor. If I may, if I may, I am also in support of this resolution. Let me say this, as a lifetime educator who who played by the rules of certification, be it the classroom or administration, I was always certified. I have, my wife, her entire career has been spent in the independent or private schools and all around the greater Hartford area. And as you may well know, certification is not required in the private schools. And yet the product that they're turning out is is a great product. And, you know, my belief as a teacher is a teacher is a teacher. And if you can teach in one classroom, you can teach very well in another classroom with some support, as Awilda has recognized. But it may be slightly rebellious of me to say this, but I, we are in an emergency situation and we're going to be well down on teachers. So I am wholeheartedly supporting this because I think it will help us tremendously.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? No, you want to call the roll? Erin, sorry.
I just want to add that, you know, I agree with Don that I think it is very important as far as our districts go and I also feel that most of our districts, being, you know, an educator and most of my time spent at middle school, we've done this outside of our content area and there certainly is supports in place. There are there are people in place in in many of the schools that I certainly know of that help with the curriculum and so forth, whether it be a para that's going to be elevated to these type of positions or quite frankly, a teacher that's going to find them themselves teaching reading for, you know, for a period of time. I think there's always ways to blend these curriculums together and I think most of, I would hope all of our districts have the supports already in place for these people, whether they be department leaders, curriculum developers in the districts, but I'm certain they all exist. And, you know, being a mutually agreed upon thing, I don't think you're going to find a teacher, you know, that's going to be told, well, you're teaching algebra, you know, tomorrow and not having any idea of being able to do that. So I don't think it's going to be, I think what these districts are going to do are going to pick the best thing that could happen for their districts if needed. And I think some of our districts aren't going to need it, but there are some that will. And I think it's very important that we use our in-house people. And in some cases, in a lot of cases, there are para professionals that are are sitting right there who have worked with our children for years and could be very, very good prospects of hopefully becoming educators soon using this piece. So I think it's a dual do a full thing here that we could actually actually see some of our paraeducators elevated with this and encourage them to go into the teaching profession. And they'd be wonderful. I know I certainly have worked with many paraeducators in my time. And I would, I would leave my classroom in their hands, definitely, and more comfortable with them than I would with with this sub.
Chairman, can I make a comment? So thank you for bringing that up. Also, Erin, you know, I think this is an opportunity for us. We talked about looking for the opportunities through crisis. Here is an opportunity for us to reimagine our pathways for paraeducators to become teachers. Paraeducators have chosen to go into the schools and have chosen that community and are embedded in our schools. And in my opinion, when we're done with all of this, we should have a better pathway for paraeducators to become teachers in Connecticut. And I have to remind this group that in many cases, paraeducators are people of color. And this is a great opportunity for us to really stand behind our belief that diversifying the profession is is one of our goals. And I want to see how this plays out this year, but I want to capitalize on the opportunity to try to create a long-term structure for our paraeducators to think of themselves as pre-service teachers and maybe provide opportunities for them working with our CSU system or others to create a pathway where they can envision themselves as teachers in the near future. I just wanted to put that out there. You know, it's connected to their conversations that we had earlier about addressing opportunity gaps. Well, this is one strategy that I think we need to take advantage of.
Any further comments?
Just so I'm clear though, so a paraeducator who was certified under this would only have that for this school year. Is that correct?
Correct. So it would just, we would be using their previous two years of paraeducator experience in lieu of the 12 credits for a temporary authorization for either the long-term subauthorization or for the DSAP authorization if they're enrolled in an ed prep program.
Further discussion? Malia?
I actually just had a quick question. I don't actually know if it's that quick, but hopefully. So not knowing fully, because I don't live the teacher certification process. With the experience that these individuals will then gain over this next year, and maybe this is addressed and I just didn't pick up on it. Do they then, will will that sort of count in favor for them in terms of actually getting all the requirements that they need at the back end of this? Does that make sense?
It does. Yeah. And I think it depends on the particular situation. So a teacher that's working under their initial certificate, if they're working under, say they're a first or second year teacher and they work under the temporary authorization for the year, it would still count as successful service towards team in order for them to advance their certificates to the provisional level. They would, it counts as successful service towards teacher retirement board. The same is true for provisional. So educators that need to document their months of experience in order to go from the provisional to the professional, it will, it will all count because we're, if if approved by the board, it would be considered an authorized assignment for educators for the 2021 school year. So essentially, we'd be giving latitude for districts to create that flexibility.
Further questions? Al, do you want to call the roll?
Okay, thank you. So I will take a vote roll call for agenda item 3B. Chairman Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lopez?
Yes.
Erin Benham?
Yes.
Bonnie Burr?
Yes.
Karen DeBoz Walton?
Yes.
Elwood Exley?
Yes.
Donald Harris?
Yes.
Martha Prue?
Yes.
Awilda Riesko?
Yes.
Malia Seavey?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes the vote roll call, which has passed unanimously.
Thank you. I have a motion for 3C.
So I'll move this, Karen.
Back then.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you. This is the final item we're bringing forward today. Again, it's it's a, it's being brought forward due to the need for us to adapt to the realities now. And it basically is a recommendation for a waiver of a cut score on an assessment that we believe the necessary parts to get to the score are not going to be possible, given the the fluid fluidity of our situation. So I'll turn it back over to Dr. Tucker, who has, Dr. Moore's with her also to explain in greater detail and answer any questions. Dr. Tucker?
Thank you. In accordance with Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7C, the State Department of Ed provided Connecticut educator preparation programs with guidelines for the extension of flexibilities for candidates enrolled in approved educator preparation programs. Who student.
Everybody else not hearing?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Who student teaching and clinical placements were impacted due to COVID-19 and the cancellation of school classes during the spring 2020 semester. As a result, the Commissioner's guidelines indicated that if possible, candidates should complete EDTPA as required during spring 2020. However, the EDTPA cut score requirement would be waived. Additionally, each educator preparation program was allowed to submit to the CSDE a list of candidates who were unable to complete EDTPA during the spring 2020 semester due to COVID-19 circumstances for an EDTPA completion waiver. Due to the ongoing pandemic, the 2020, 2021 academic year will be challenging for our Connecticut educator preparation programs and their candidates seeking to complete student teaching requirements for certification as EPPs endeavor to implement newly revised support, monitoring and evaluation systems for the student teaching experience, including the completion of EDTPA. Although EDTPA completion requirement would remain in effect, we recommend that the EDTPA cut score be waived for all Connecticut educator preparation candidates completing and submitting the scoring in EDTPA portfolio during the 2020, 21 academic year, beginning September 1, 2020 through August 31, 2021. This waiver will serve to support our Connecticut educator preparation program and their candidates in successfully implementing adjustments required to accommodate the two non-standard instructional models described in Governor Lamont's three-level school reopening plan, including incorporating the training and preparation benefit of EDTPA without the requirement of achieving a specific score on EDTPA.
Questions or comments? Nobody has anything to add.
Yeah, I guess, just, I don't totally understand this this process, but I take, is this a permanent waiver on that? So they they don't get, if they do their student teaching, this is, they pass it even though there's no cut score. They don't have to do it again. They don't have to get reevaluated. Is that correct? So this, then they go on to the next level.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, thanks. That's good.
Erin?
Shwana, was this also, as I recall last year, did we also make an exception for those who were in the middle of their student teaching? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we, for those that were in the middle of their student teaching and then also we closed schools. So, okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Al, do you want to call the roll?
Okay, I will now take a vote roll call for agenda item 3C. Chairman Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lopez?
Aye.
Aye.
Aaron Benham?
Aye.
Bonnie Burr?
Yes.
Karen DeBeau's Walton?
Yes.
Elwood Exley?
Yes.
Donald Harris?
Aye.
Martha Prue?
Yes.
Will Dorriasco?
Yes.
Malia Seavy?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes the vote which has passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you all. You know, it's interesting. There are very few things that line up, but I just got a text from Jessa that said, we're ready. So the timing of this was surprisingly good. So I know they're going to be popping on any second. I just want to, you know, acknowledge and thank you for the flexibility and the ability to adapt as a board to our times. As I said earlier, you know, in, in March, from March 12th to March 17th, all schools closed. And much of what happened in Connecticut was based on executive orders. We really want to remove the executive orders from being the primary way of functioning. And we appreciate your, your questions, your challenging, challenging us to make sure we're balanced, standard tie and to students and educational systems to reach their potential. And we look forward to continuing the conversation and sharing information with you so that you have more day-to-day operational understanding of how we're doing that with assessment, how we're doing that with teacher evaluation. That's critically important. So thank you. And with that, I see that Jessa is removing her facial covering and I'm going to turn it back over to Deputy Commissioner Nez Smith and Legal Director Jessa Myrtle at the request of the chair, actually.
One thing though, this item is tabled, so you'll need a motion to take it off the table.
May I have such a motion?
Go move.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any objection? I think we'll just take it off the table. I don't think we need a roll call for that, do we Jess?
No.
You do not.
Good. Okay, so.
So we've got some additional language that we, we added. Just trying to figure out how to share it.
Sorry, I'll just share with us for a moment. I think, is it, yeah, is it contingent upon you or am I able to share my screen? Thank you. If you wouldn't mind just scrolling down to where we inserted the language, thank you. So what we've inserted here is an opening paragraph as part of the resolution that's here in the bold and blue that addressed that regardless of the instructional approach, we intend for these frameworks to be implemented with equity at their core, that the authorization that you're providing here due to unavoidable emergencies is contingent upon the district's providing rigorous learning and engagement opportunities that are aligned with the state standards and board expectations. And that that could include, but is not limited to opportunities for students to be engaged daily, access grade level standards, and be provided the national, necessary academic and social emotional supports. And that this anticipates that classrooms will provide on grade instruction that accelerates learning and incorporates the requisite scaffolds and supports. And the other changes are largely to conform with, with that insertion, although I did make that change that you requested, Chair Taylor, to include that this must be a good faith decision that is necessary to protect health and promote the safety of the school community, as well as a sentence in the, in the end, if you'll scroll down a little bit more, as you please. There is in a section where we noted that this should be used sort of to the minimum extent feasible. We've inserted here again that the hybrid or remote programming that's provided must align with these expectations for rigorous engagement and grade level outcomes.
Could you go back to the first long insert there? Thank you. In, in that insert, this just rated on me dramatically, the sentence should include, should be, but are not limited. Thank you. Now with that pedantic observation, is anybody else have something to say about this? Resolution ended, done?
Alan, I think you can teach English now.
Oh, good.
I like it.
I had one question about this that I'd like to throw out. All of it talks about county data, but isn't the municipality's data the more important?
So the indicators that were published from the State Department of Ed and the State Department of Health, Public Health are county-based, and that's because in the municipality or the district, sometimes the numbers are so small that there could be, the trend data could be problematic. However, we have engaged with DPH and local health officials to discuss providing them both of those indicators. So while we would recommend that they need to consider the county-based to avoid sort of swing that may not be statistically important, that they would also have access to the, to the municipality or the district base. And that's in part in response to some of the feedback we've received from local health department officials in areas such as Hartford where they would indicate that it's possible that the city of Hartford's considerations need to be substantially different than the county of Hartford, for example. So we would anticipate that local authorities would have the ability to consider both of those, particularly in cases where there may be a reason that the municipality or district level data is particularly relevant as a consideration.
Do we need to change the resolution to allow that? Because that's exactly what I was thinking of. You know, we've got Bridgeport and Wilton in the same county, but they're likely to have very different situations on this. Hartford and St. Louis, on and on.
May I add just the, the process that's been used around that? You know, every Tuesday morning, we know have Health and Safety Tuesdays with our districts, local health, medical advisors and others. And we're having this level of conversation in how to operationalize the metrics. And we had that conversation again this morning. So as Jessa mentioned, the county data is available and they'll also have the district data, but they're cautioned by DPH to be very careful in how they look at the, the, the smaller ends around it. So that, but just so you know, that is a conversation that is happening in a very consistent basis with all those who are involved in the decision-making when looking at the data.
I just wanted to, to just sort of put a finer point on that too, because I think, you know, the assumption is, as you were saying, Ellen, how different a Hartford versus, you know, an Avon might look, right? I'm in Waterford, which is a smaller N, so to speak, that also has a nursing home. So our numbers may look bigger, but it's those, you know, the majority of those numbers might actually be confined within the nursing homes. So, so that, that play or that balance between looking at county and local data, I think, is an important one to keep in mind.
What I would just know, and I think is that we are covered, certainly agree with the, the question and the concern. I think because the resolution includes the Congress, the language about additional considerations, that that would include this type of conversation.
What, what language were you pointing at directly, Jessa? Because I?
So in the, the paragraph where county is referenced, so that's, if you can scroll down a little bit. And I will acknowledge, we're getting a little close to, I think, interpretation that would potentially warrant executive session from the perspective of me providing legal advice or interpretation, but I just wanted, wanted to note, note that.
Oh, okay. I see. Yeah. Actually, take that paragraph. Okay. I think that does it. Sorry, I missed that before.
Malia? Can you just scroll just before the long insert? I'm just trying to get a sense of exactly how that's falling in to the resolution. Go a little bit further. Great. Thank you.
Excuse me, Jessa, question for you. Is this resolution going to be marked as amended?
Yes, I would mark this as an amended resolution to the one that was submitted today.
All right. Thank you. Chairman Taylor?
Yes. So is any, any further questions? Have we moved the amended resolution out?
Yeah, we did. Yes.
Okay, we moved it as imagined. Any further discussion? Go ahead. I seen it. Bob?
Yeah, I guess one, I should have looked at this before, but Jess, I'm assuming that within a district, they can, like the high school district is in, in many different counties. So they could have a different model in different, for different schools.
Yes, all of our feedback anticipates that there could be different models for different grade levels or schools.
Okay. Thanks, Jessa.
Further questions or comments? Al?
Okay, I will now do a roll call vote for the amended resolution for agenda item 3A. Chairman Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lopez?
Aye.
Aaron Benham?
Aye.
Bonnie Burr?
Yes.
Karen DeBeau's Walton?
Yes.
Elwood Exley?
Yes.
Donald Harris?
Yes.
Martha Prue?
Yes.
Will Dorriasco?
Yes.
Malia Seavy?
Seavy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The motion for agenda item 3A has passed unanimously. Thank you.
Can we have that amended letter emailed to us after the meeting?
Okay, we'll have Jessa do, Jessa will send it to me and I'll send it to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you all for.
Anything else from? Yes. Erin?
Commissioner, you had said earlier that you expect most of the plans to be coming in today. And so we'll, as a board, we'll get an idea of where we stand, what, what choice they're making as a district.
Yes. What I'll do is once we're done getting the information from districts that are really a snapshot of today or last Wednesday, when most of them turned them in, we'll communicate that information to you all.
And then I just would like to make a comment, but I think, I think as a board, we need to be very careful about how, when we talk about our schooling of last year from March to June. And so often it's, it's referred to as lost days and lost learning. And I, I think we're doing a, an unfair to our teachers and our parents out there that were teachers. Certainly it was a different learning, but I don't think it was a complete lost learning for many of our students. And I think we have to be very careful that the amount of time and effort that our districts and teachers and administrators and paras and, and our parents out there that became teachers put into this, that some learning did take place and that we might find ourselves sitting back into that situation. And to refer to it as a lost time is, is probably not the best thing that we should be doing, in my opinion.
I, I understand that and I agree. I think people have made extraordinary efforts throughout the system, including parents. And at the same time, I think we all recognize that can't match what children would get if they were able to be in school. And I think that's all we mean. And I, I think we have to acknowledge that and share the sadness that children and their parents and their teachers must all be feeling. Malia?
And I don't want it to be misheard, my comments that I made earlier today. I fully agree with what you're saying, Erin. But to echo also what Chair Taylor is, is saying, there are numbers of students that were not reached, and I'm not blaming anyone for that happening. It just is real, that they, they, for whatever reason, were not able to or did not connect. And it's our responsibility as a board and as a state and department and local districts to ensure that that doesn't continue and that we are doing all that we can to make sure that they are touched and educated and supported. Indeed, I don't fault anyone that's a teacher, that's an administrator, that's anyone that is, was trying to deal with this crisis that no one could have ever anticipated and no one had a plan for, nor would they have been expected to have a plan for. So I deeply appreciate all of the work that everyone has done over the past six months of this, this crazy pandemic that we've been in. But we can sit back and we can own that there were things that we do have to go back and figure out, how do we do better as we move forward still in this pandemic?
Well, I agree with you 100%. Malia, I really do. And I think that's why, you know, our, our teachers and our students need to be face-to-face as much as possible. And to get our children back in Connecticut, this, in my opinion, the sooner the better, because I think it's important. And, you know, we've always had that gap there. This certainly hasn't helped it. And I think we need to take this opportunity to really, I think we have taken this opportunity to really understand it and has really brought it out certain, for everyone to see. So I agree with you 100%. And that's why, I, there is no exception for face, you know, face-to-face learning. And I think as soon as we get that back, I think we'll be better off.
Any further comments?
Yeah, this is a will done. And speaking about face-to-face learning is, just for a point of clarification, because I, as you know, I had some technology issues this morning. But if there's a will, there's a way. I got through the phone, as you all can hear. Our next meeting is going to be in persona. Is that correct?
Yes.
Did I hear? Yes, I'm sorry.
That is, that is the goal that we're working on, but we'll keep, we'll get back to the board to confirm that at 100%. But that is the goal that we're working towards.
Okay. Thank you so much, Albie. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Chairman Taylor. So a couple of quick things. First of all, I want to thank the staff who have worked over the last month to try to get what you had in front of you today. And, you know, that took a lot of conversations with stakeholders, with educational partners, with universities, with the governor's office, with the legal department. And so there were so many different conversations that led it up to this. And I want to acknowledge that work. I also want to share that. want to acknowledge that work. I also want to share that, you know, a lot of attention is being given to how districts are choosing to open the year. And while we feel Connecticut is poised for in-person learning, we also recognize that the it's not a static decision. For those schools that are opening hybrid, their intent is to continue to grow, to go full in person, right? So it's important that we kind of wrap our heads around the fact that for the foreseeable future, nothing is going to be set in stone, that we have to be prepared to react to what our health data indicates and any other factors that might influence health and safety. And I say that because in education, we like to have a plan. We like to be thought, we like to think through six months down the road. And we know that that's how we've operated in the past. And much like you were able to be nimble today to come up with some flexibilities that are going to allow us to open the doors, I think I'm forecasting in the future that things could get better. And we could be pushing to get more kids in schools more aggressively in the future, based on what we're seeing, what we learn about the COVID-19. But the flip is true also, that much like we did in March, there might have to be adjustments either way. And I think this is important for us. I know as a parent, it's important for me to know, because I have to have ideas on what I'm going to do in all three of the scenarios for my own children. And that's difficult. So while we're talking a lot about reopening, we must keep in mind that our planning needs to extend for the three scenarios in the near future. And we have to create policy, practice, and accountability measures so that we're in regardless of what measure we're in, what scenario we're in, we're pushing the needle in education, we're prepared. So I just wanted to throw that out there, because I know a lot of attention is right now on what are people doing in the next three weeks. We should also be thinking just as intently as what are we going to be doing in two months? What are we going to be doing in four months? And how are we going to support and provide accountability to make sure that our kids' needs are being met? So that's, that's the only comment I wanted to share. And again, thank you all for your flexibility and time.
Aaron, thank you, Commissioner. Aaron?
I just wanted to add, because, you know, you mentioned the three plans, and, you know, many of us have heard over the last month with this changing of, you know, the required and the selection and people questioning why the three plans and why did we have to go through this work if and all of a sudden it was shifted to the district? I think it's the best thing that we did. I look back at March, and for some of you remember, we, you know, the schools closed and we had districts that were moved right in. In March 16, 17, they were at home. And and then we had other districts that, four weeks out, hadn't started yet. And that, I think, is one of the benefits of having these three plans that were a lot of work for our districts to do. But at least now, there's something in place. And it's been shared, they've been vetted. And I think now they have something in place that if they were to have to move from Plan A to Plan B to Plan B to Plan C, that they're ready. They're, well, let's put it this way, they're more prepared than they were certainly in March. And I think that is most important. We, if anything, we learned is how long we waited for all of our districts to get up and going. Some of them didn't even start until April. So I think that's, you know, a lot of people have said to me, why all the work for these three plans? Well, I think it's the best thing that we did. Quite frankly, I really do. Lot of work, but I think it's very necessary. And who knows for how long it will be necessary.
Thank you. I'd rather have them planning for student safety during the summer months than in October, when you have to roll it out.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes. Student safety and student education at the same time. Thank you, Aaron, for your comments. It's just, I've been on this board for a long time, as you all know. And we had, this is the second of the unimaginable events. And this one is, I think, it's not as gruesome, but it's more disruptive. And I just want to thank the Commissioner and everybody at the department and all of the teachers and educators and board members in all of our districts, because you're all dealing with something that none of us have ever thought about. And at the same time, our kids keep getting older and they keep growing, and they need you desperately, and you're stepping up to it. So thank you all. Thank you to the board. I think, well, if somebody else has something to say, we're, we're done. Have a motion to adjourn. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Goodbye, all. Stay well.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.